And would ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second to table the minutes of June 5th. Computer problem or something. So I call for a vote. All in favor of that table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have approved the following claims.
Mr. Carr, I make the motion to approve. Approved the claim as presented?
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we are ready for Mike Fincher. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, gentlemen. Coming before you guys today on behalf of the courthouse security committee. Part of our discussions that we've been doing was...
Yeah, I do. No, that's okay.
It's not even...
Huh?
It's not even...
You know what I'm surprised at with all those people on that committee, and you're the only one that's here to present this?
Nope. Oh, Sheriff's here too. I'm hiding. Sheriff's got a hiding bag. Well, we're... One of the agreements that we came upon was still the need for some courthouse security to follow along with the Supreme Court mandates from the state of Indiana. What we did is, we did up a little bit of a draft. It's not a complete draft, but we wanted to get your guys' approval for you to... For the auditor to go ahead and forward it up to Kim Irwin, our personnel people, to get a more formal job description written up, see what the pay was being that, and start moving forward with that to get approval from the council, hopefully for 2024.
Should this be like a reserve officer?
No, this will be a whole... It'll be a separate department underneath the sheriff's department.
Just like security.
It'll be a full-time... It'll be full-time positions.
One person?
We're looking for three. We're hoping to get three full-time and one part-time. They'll be underneath the sheriff's department.
Want to add to what Mike said earlier is that you have... I missed a few of those courthouse security meetings because of radiation treatments. But at the last meeting, it was kind of a summing up meeting of things that had discussed before. They have really worked over, I think, all possibilities and really have a great job of discussing it, trying to figure out what's the best options for courthouse security. The main thing, if you... What they have found is that we are woefully lax. I'm stepping on what you're wanting to say. Why, are you just going right there?
No, no, go ahead, sir.
Wait, the use of the single word. No, every courthouse in Indiana doesn't have a security officer.
We're down to... We're one of the last two to three.
Two to three. Unfortunately, we're trying through the wackos. You don't know.
Was this the description that you can send to Irwin to make it official? Is that over here?
Right, they had to make a lot of... These are what we're recommending that are in there, and I'm sure Kim Irwin has probably done some for other counties and that. So they would blend what we're looking for with some other ones. They'd come back, we'd take a look at it, again tweak some more things, and before it's presented to the council.
I know when I was working over at jail, I didn't leave my position over there to run over here because the deputies were gone to help detain somebody at the last minute. It turned out worse than what it did, so... I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn this job description to Irwin. Have you finalized approval of that?
Yep. I'll second that. You'll second that. Okay, so I have a motion for us to send this job description to Irwin and have them develop a proper job description for us. Okay, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
I just want to commend you for bringing this to the commissioner that he is long overdue, and I hope you three gentlemen will see it through.
Well, unfortunately, I mean, I feel the same way, but unfortunately, it's very expensive.
Three new employees?
What?
Having three new employees?
Three. Yep, and two and a half. Yeah, we talked about guard systems for employees to get in a different door. You explain that to us.
So, a lot of the stuff, the other security upgrades that I'm looking at, I've already applied for through the Homeland Security Grant. I should find out if that's been approved. I'm looking at key swipe systems, improving the metal detector that we used on the other day. Hopefully go into an X-ray or an improved system. I got... The one system I looked at is just not cost-effective for us. The system itself was $50,000, but the software upgrades monthly were $4,000 a month. Now, it would have been great. You don't have to empty your pockets or anything. You just walk through and it catches any abnormal hours. We just can't... I know we can't afford that, so there's some thing... There's still some things that have to bounce around. Upgraded the doors in the museum, especially since the election of Booker Sorensen out there now. Yeah, so there's a bunch of upgrades that I'm working for, and hopefully all these grants do get approved. And that, so they'll have Bogman, these security positions. You guys have already improved the cameras and their end, so that's one of the things that we need to do as well.
Well, I appreciate all your time and effort you put in for this county and for the citizens.
The magnetometers that you just walked through, they beat.
That one downstairs is probably thirty years older than this.
I think you guys probably got that right around 2001.
I was working at the jail when Randall was here, and we brought it over here.
Did we get that new or something good that's...
We got it from the military service. Got it right.
That's why I was thinking... No?
No.
Yeah, veteran military have all their X-ray.
Government issues, stuff.
I know that ready, the one itself, X-ray machine, we got that from... Maybe it's in your county or somewhere.
I think it did come from one. That's the one that's... It hadn't been used in so long, I'm nervous that the shrouds and that have corroded and that, and I wouldn't even plug it in.
Yeah. Maybe you'd put that in the option.
No.
I don't think it is. That's got a whole different disposal.
Right.
Maybe you'd have to...
Magnetometer ones only in the five thousand.
Yeah, they're five, six thousand dollars. But there's another system similar to that one that's a lot more expensive than... A lot cheaper. That doesn't require the software ever that I'm looking at. I just gotta talk to some people that have actually utilized it to see if it's worth it or if we go with the old stop magnetometers and X-ray machines.
It'd be nice to get that sent in before the trial.
Well... That's quick.
Yeah.
If the grant doesn't get approved until September, October, the trial goes to January, I'll talk with the council, see if the grants approved, if they'll allow me to go ahead and...
Is it a magic grant?
It's a reversal.
Reversal.
On my own cycle.
So, the one we have does work for us?
The magnetometer does, yeah. It's just getting old. I mean, it's twenty... I think, looking at the manufacturer date, it's twenty-two, twenty-three years old. Maybe a little older.
On one level, I don't like this because it's a step towards more of a militaristic type of thing in my mind of controlling people, and we have such an open flow now. And it's, to me, even before I was the commissioner, the courthouse was not an unfriendly place at all. You just walked in, go and do your business, you know, pay your taxes, or do whatever you had to do. And I remember when I was doing business in Michigan and in Indiana, and when you'd go into the state offices in Michigan, oh, it was like going into a correctional facility. I mean, everything was locked down, everything was tight. And down in Indiana, you just walk in the door, go wherever you want. It wasn't long till they shut it all down. Down in Indianapolis too. I think we just have to be realistic and say, this is the way it is. It's too bad.
It is. Well, society's changed and all the difference.
What?
It's only gonna get worse before it gets better.
It isn't gonna get any better, no. I don't think so.
Some of the other counties that have, when they implemented the security aspects to it, you'd be amazed at some of the stuff that people were trying to bring, or that people were bringing to the courthouse. Down in, I think it was Orange County, if I remember correctly. It's been a few years since I read the story on it. A gentleman brought a chainsaw into the courthouse.
Why would he bring a chainsaw into the courthouse?
He was upset with the treasurer.
His upsets are he was cut the desk up or whatever on it.
Upset with the government officers not even bringing a chainsaw into the courthouse.
Yeah.
You know, all it would take would be one incident for you to regret not taking it.
Absolutely.
So just, if you have any reservations, just keep that in mind. You don't want to have any regrets.
Bill was on that committee and has been very supportive of all the talks and everything. I get his reservations, but I've not heard him say anything about that causing him any...
Well, I've never had a chainsaw in my office, but you know, you never know.
We have, we have to do it.
I just got a new one. Little handheld thing.
In fact, I wanted to tighten up, to at least have an officer in the building here at all times for fifteen, twenty years. But it just progressively gets more incumbent on us. We have to do it. We have to do it. I watched one time down in Frankfort when it... They only had one person on guard down at my door. And so, the young man was in court, was gonna be sentenced to three, four years in prison, and the judge evidently felt there was a chance of him holding. So the way they handled it was, he said, "I'm gonna have to go back into my chambers and reread some of this, and I'll come back out with my decision." I don't think he was waiting on his decision at all. He was waiting on a sheriff's deputy to get there, is what it was. Because I noticed that this very well-built sheriff's detective came walking in and was sitting in the back of the room, in the courtroom, and then the judge walked back in right away. I mean, that was the deciding factor. And boy, as soon as he gave that... Yeah, when he gave that sentence, about that fast, his hands were behind you, but he was...
At the door?
Yep. There wasn't any time there to escape.
And that's why we're looking for the numbers we're looking for, instead of just one person on a door.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, we've had major northern and southern part of the county, and yep, I could be busy on the call.
Yeah. Well, we thank you for bringing us into this, and we're sending it on to Irwin now.
Thank you.
See what we can do. Tony, do you have anything... Or, Tony, do you have any...
To add to that particular thing?
No.
Okay. Attorney Ted Johnson?
Okay, first thing is, I distributed information on purchasing policies, including county's current purchasing policies, which were adopted in 1998. Looking at those policies, they are similar to the policies that were adopted by, you know, probably ninety percent of the counties in Indiana, which the purchasing statutes changed that. The law changed that year. It used to be that counties established, the county commissioners established purchasing policies, and they could by resolution delegate purchasing authority to individual office holders and so forth. Generally speaking, the board of commissioners were the ones that were in control totally of purchasing. The law changed in 98, and it says governing bodies. So governing bodies, as defined in Indiana Code, included board commissioners and the county councils. So the county council can establish its own policies for itself. It doesn't establish purchasing policies for any of the other offices in the county. The board of commissioners still determine the purchasing policies for itself and for any of the other departments of the county government. So, the policies that were established by Carroll County Board of Commissioners set up in which basically listed all of the offices that the board thought should have authority to do purchases. And the list is in that... I gave you the ordinance. Let me see what that's... It was, every elected official was included in that. It's county ordinance number five, which actually was the 1998 J-05. The list is in ordinance number five. Each elected official, each circuit's superior court judge, county highway superintendent or engineer, emergency medical services director, Carroll County Park Board, Carroll Manor superintendent, extension office, emergency management director, county veterans office, soil and water, county health director, E-911, Carroll County Historical Society curator, and Carroll County Area Plan Director, and such employees as are designated from time to time and rights. So the commissioners reserve the right to add to that list or detract from it. And that was adopted in July of 98. The same meeting in which the pop... Who was giving purchasing authority was adopted. The commissioners adopted two other ordinances, which were not given numbers, but they do appear in commissioners' records. So they were, they are, they were part of the three packages, you know, a bundle of three ordinances that counties were adopting all over Indiana. And typical to those, it sets out, basically follows the statute, what each purchasing agent, all of these offices are purchasing agents for the county. It did not mention the county council, because again, the county council is its own purchasing agent. They can purchase, you know, they can hire consultants for personnel issues and attorney and so forth. They can independently do that. Most of theirs are de-served. They could purchase their own computers and all that without the board of commissioners having any say so. So, the policies that were set forth, you know, the amounts are out of date. The amounts have changed since these were adopted. Purchases of less than 25,000 didn't require any, you know, anything but, you know, you want on the open market, you know, between 25 and 100,000. So there were different rules, you know, based on size. But all of these officers, all of these county officials and departments had that authority under our policies. There's no restriction as to the type of purchases that they could make. And the other thing that's significant is that in the terms of purchasing services, a lot of the contracts that county made are serviced for services for, you know, whatever. It's not necessarily purchasing office equipment and so forth. And which was, this was typical of those, these policies that were adopted by most counties. The county determines that each county agency, department, office, elected official, may purchase services in whatever manner, and purchase determines to be reasonable. The purchasing agency may not require any county agency, department to purchase services in any particular manner. So, what brought this up was the clerks going out and hiring an attorney. Clerk had the authority legally under our purchasing policies to engage an attorney. But there are two things that everybody has to have, including the board of commissioners, before you can purchase anything or sign an agreement with them, then you have to have authority to do it, number one. And the second, you have to have access to a line item in your budget that is unencumbered and has sufficient funds to pay for the contract, whatever document you're signing. The clerk had first the authority, but she did not have access to a line item from which to pay that. So that was the, you know, fault there in that contract. So the whole thing is that this part is looking at, what do the purchasing policies actually say? And that's what they say. So, I've given you some ideas, suggestions to be thinking about what you want your policies to look like, and we can gather other samples from other counties. And, for example, the one I gave you gives a list of the... List of the types of purchases that have to come to the board of commissioners without authority of individually, of individual office holders to do it. And in this one case, it was service contract... Purchases of the following, regardless of the amount of cost, shall be subject to the prior written approval of board of commissioners. So that would be my endorsing the document that the office holder wants to purchase something. This went in their budget, but... And the example that this county did was service contracts for buildings, equipment, and grounds. So nobody, no individual office holder could enter service contract for buildings and pieces of ground. Maintenance agreements. That's very broad. You can have a maintenance agreement like copy machines, whatever, you know. I don't know if we have a uniform maintenance agreement. We probably do copy machines, single one.
For rent management.
Yeah, so that's not an issue. Leases of equipment, buildings or real estate, in other words, a park can't go out. Because either the policies that counties were adopting, you know, there was nothing to prevent the purchasing agents from going out and doing this. If they had a line item in there, that was the other thing. They don't have a line item. They can't go out and do anything.
Let me ask a question about that.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, let's take Scott here for the highway department. He wants to lease a big building in Flora for... He doesn't. I'm just using this as an example. Let's say he wants to lease a big building for truck repair and like that, okay? And he has in his budget right now to cover that, and it's in the right line item and everything, okay? That doesn't say though that on a lease, he'll have that in his budget ten years from now. So, so if he signs a twenty-year lease on his property, how's that work? I mean...
Well, they really have to have more in the lease. They have to have a non-acquisition clause. So there's a lot of legalities that have to be in something that day. So I think you're protected, but it's probably just best to lay that out. Nobody leases anything without coming to the board of commissioners, no matter their, you know... I don't know if there are, there's a de minimis or a small amount of purchased equipment leasing that you want to permit, you know? And you can, don't have to do this across the board to all departments. You can relax the rules, for example, for like the highway department. If they do a lot of this, and you don't want to have them, you have to come to a meeting for, you know, something smaller or whatever amount.
I would imagine like the highway department probably leases some of their welding tanks and stuff like that.
Yeah. Yes, it certainly is. So some law has to be given to what you put in here, so that you don't hamstring, you know, a department that regularly routinely does this, so that they don't have to come to every... Get commissioners' orders on every document that they sign for that purpose, right? But that's the idea, and that's a good example. So this is just to kind of get the conversation started. And you may think of other things that... Well, the other one, I don't think I got through the list. Contracts of personal services. Contracts of personal services. In other words, or professional services. The other was contract for professional services of consulting. So, the surveyor, for example, can't go hire a consultant with, under this one, without getting approval from the board. Even if they got contractual services money in their budget to do that, this would require them first to come to either the county commissioners or the grading board to, for the surveyor, to get an engineer to do, you know, a contract, to go out and do an engineering study or a drainage, for example, so...
Maybe that's what he does now a little more. Sure, he comes and does.
You have to outsource a lot of things anymore when you don't have in-house expertise to do it. So, you know, so one approach to the purchasing policies is to restrict certain categories of purchases, so those get examined. Now, the other aspect of it is that purchasing statutes have been, you know, relaxed. You know, the amounts that you can get, you know, without going through public bidding, you know, have greatly increased. So that's nothing to look at. If you adopt the purchasing statutes using state limits, those are probably going to be higher than the number one. Maybe the fact that they have to have a line item in their budget is actually, you know, the main thing. The main limit on it is, they gotta have it higher in their budget to do it. But broad categories like contractual services, you know, if they got a lot of money in the contractual services line item, that would permit them to, you know, spend it all on one contract. So there needs to be some looking at what the law allows and what the county feels is a comfortable level of purchasing authority for these individual department handles and officers.
So, what's our... How do we go for purity?
Next action would probably be to think about the categories of purchases. And our purchases used to be, you think of goods and materials, but it's a lot broader. Indiana purchases applies to services and everything. So the first thing would be to identify categories, I think, that you want to have specifically restricted to having to come up to the board of commissioners to approve. That starting list that I gave you from that other county is the starting point. You might want to look at that. That would be my... You might want to look at that. That would be my suggestion. And then determine first what categories of services you want all of these offices to have to come to the board of commissioners to get endorsement of their contract. That would be the first thing.
Now, is that open meeting, conversation, or do sessions?
Uh, you, yeah.
We're judging.
I mean, if, if you could probably maybe want to set aside time either during the meeting or, you know, before the meeting or some other time, you know. You don't have to do it all at one time, you know. You might start small and, and let's see what the agenda is. For example, the, the next meeting, you know, we got time the next meeting and just set aside some time in the agenda to talk about it and solicit input. But I think we should start with the board, you know, having a discussion and not bring everybody involved in the conversation. And then once you got what you think would be reasonable, then open it up for suggestions by your department.
One thing, one thing I noticed on here is that it has the historical society museum.
Right, right.
That, that should be completely justified.
Sure. So these policies are in effect that you got right now. But the limiting factor, like I said before, they gotta have a line item that's appropriate to that before. So, so it's not like you've got to do this immediately, but it needs to give some thought and do it sooner than later.
The council has pretty well, I think, thought this through by how much they include in the budget.
Right. I mean, uh, that's true. That's the limiting factor. So I think the category is part of it, is, is the department of commissioners you can focus on, you know. What things do you definitely want an office holder to come to before they even, you know? Yeah.
Most of the time, departments they go out for these contracts use a cabinet money in their, their budgets. And I know that we've been preached to, ever since I was audited, the last time after I was audited, starting in the treasurer's office, that all contracts need to come before the commissioners for approval. Me, as a department head, I could still probably do that. Just because I don't want to go alone without somebody else helping me, you know, with that decision, whether it's a good decision and, and bring it before you. I think that's all good news being there.
So.
Okay, next slide of jail.
Behind in jail, you go to easement, I think, the, the form of easements was renewed, reprocessed and so forth and is in the hands of the, the owner's attorney, Mary Robson, of June the tenth on Saturday, that she got the final draft. So we're wait, just waiting for the, the owners to, to sign off on it. And the funds for the, to pay for the easement are already, the checks are in, not in the mail, they're in your hands, right?
Right. They're in my hands.
So I haven't heard anything, I checked my email before it came up and nothing yet from Mary. So again, her clients are in Kansas and one of them's elderly and they do have to get it motorized and so forth. So that, I would think that would happen this week. So that's, that's all we did until the end. Innkeeper's tax, the treasurer brought up, what do we need to do to reactivate that? And this morning we got hold of the actual ordinance that's on the books. The innkeeper's tax has been changed since this was adopted in two thousand and twelve. And I think maybe the funds were only collected one, one year. I'm not sure of that, but anyway. So there's, there's kind of three parts to this. The current ordinance is outdated and needs to be updated. And it didn't get put in the county code and I think it's because it was adopted after, it, it's been adopted since the county code. It shouldn't have got into the county code and it's not, so.
Yes, because we haven't qualified our.
Right.
We haven't qualified those, I haven't had a.
Right, right. So it should be worded such that it mines, it mines the county code and puts it in the format that it could have a go-in period in the county code. So the ordinance, I'm going to, there are three parts to it. The actual imposition of the tax is county council, the council is the one that initiates the tax. So I'm going to share this information with Eric Burns and so he can, he has what we've got and so you can start on, on the tax part of it. The board of commissioners part of it is to, the board of commissioners is responsible for creating a convention tourism and I forget what the other one is.
Visitor.
Convention bureau.
Yeah.
A commission. The, the commissioners establish a commission and the membership on that.
Commission establishes the commission.
The board of commissioners establish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The convention and visitors and tourism commission. And sets the number, it has to be somewhat politically balanced. It has to have a certain representation, meaning one, the collections and the population and so forth. It's kind of, actually kind of complex who's on the commission. So we'll, we'll sort that out. I'll be, I'll be working on that part of it. And then when, when the council adopts a tax and the board adopts a commission, it could take effect January one. Commission would get up and run in January one and then you could begin collecting the tax as early as January one. But in the present state of it, I, I do not, you know, I don't think it should be done. And also the, you know, the, the other representation on it, it's not, it's not, it's, it's people that are engaged in the business of tourism. So those would be logical members of, of it. It's not all elected officials on this commission. It has to be people that are involved. It can be somebody that's involved in, like, has a, has a, has a festival every year, even in one of the incorporated towns, for example, you know, to be put on, you know. Because the commission determines the distribution of the money that comes in. And there are rules for distrib, dispersing that. The treasurer is the one that collects the tax and sends the forms and everything to the places that generate the money for, for the tax and collects the money. So first step is going to be council adopting the innkeeper's tax, re-adopting it in, in court, in court's current statutes. And then when they adopt the tax, then the board will have, we can have our ordinance ready to create permission.
Are these usually a percent?
Yes.
Percent of the innkeepers? Or is that flag?
Ours is five, currently, I'm sorry, Julie Lee of the chamber. Years ago, the council adopted five percent. And that's what was approved by the state legislature as well, so. And then I believe it was the commissioners at the time that did establish the CBB. But we put a thirty-room minimum threshold on it. And so that's why we only collected.
Thirty what?
Thirty rooms that were for rent back in two thousand and twelve.
It had to have thirty rentable rooms before they had to pay tax?
Total in the county, total county.
For the county, there had to be thirty rooms?
Right, and we, we fell below that threshold when Wyandotte's at the time went bankrupt and closed. So we only collected for one year. Yeah, like Ted was saying, there's, there's a lot of things that have changed. You have the marketplace vendors now like Verbo and Airbnb, those didn't exist, you know, twelve years ago. So they collect the tax and by statute have to send it straight to the department of revenue, so. So there's, there's some things to consider, but there is an ordinance somewhere where it established the CBB. So I don't know if we need to amend that. I don't know what the, but there's some things to decide. You know, you can add things. So I didn't know what.
Okay.
You would like for us to do. We would work with that.
If we do have an ordinance and it being commissioner, right, for the commission, so we'll.
Should be.
Further, it may be just easier to adopt a new ordinance repealing any prior ordinances and start off with a clean slate, you know?
And when I'm reading, the DOR's put out guidelines, it says that it has to be approved by the state legislature if we go something new. So I don't know if it's easier to change.
There is a, I, I, there's a default one that you can use without having to go to the legislature.
That'd be nice.
I think that would be, that would be my recommendation.
Yes.
I mean, I'll pass that on to Eric too.
Yeah.
There's a template for counties that don't want to go it on their own, you know. And there's maybe not any reason for us to go it on our own and create our own. I mean, if you like, but statutes, it's.
The many that we have right now.
You don't have to have a will if you like.
You're well over thirty-five rooms at this point, well over that.
So what did you say about the Indiana Department of Revenue collects something?
So the, so the transient, the marketplace vendors like Airbnb, they collect the tax straight from the vendor. And so the state collects that tax and then they will in turn send it to the counties. So you could require all of them.
Still not quite get it. Who, who has to go to the state?
So if you own an Airbnb property.
A what?
An Airbnb.
Airbnb, okay.
Yes, for example, you collect the tax, Airbnb collects everything. You don't even have to worry about it. Airbnb then sends it to the state. So it keeps your treasure without all that extra work to do once a month, so.
Most of these innkeeper taxes, are they paid once a month or?
You can decide that. I mean, the ordinance that we voted on twelve years ago said you have to pay it monthly.
Yep.
No later than twenty days after the end of the month. And that's how it was set, like I said, twelve years ago. You have the option to change that. Years ago, we did not like, include camping. You could include camping if you wanted to. There are some things that you can decide. Fixed trailers, yeah, yeah, different things you could change if you wanted or keep it fairly simple, so. I know, I can, I.
Yeah, but the council, that's the issue, the council to decide.
The council will decide if they're going to tax camp.
That kind of thing, yeah, yeah. There's a lot of regulations.
What would that money be used for?
You could use it for, what we did that year was we used it to pay for the printing of maps that talked about all the places in Carroll County to visit. And the commission, like Ted said, it was kind of complex how it was formed, but at the time, the owner of the Madam Carol was on there, somebody who owned a rental property was on the commission. The chamber was, since we do a lot of the tourism and there were elected officials on it. So it was complex, but we just, we were only able to function for one year and then we dropped below thirty rooms, so.
It's not like they're going to make the tour long enough.
No, but you know what? Someday we'll have a hotel. I'm confident of that. We'll be ready. This will be another way to be ready for that as well.
Looking toward. Thinking of when we did it.
Yeah.
Looking towards the future.
Yes, looking towards the future as well.
Yeah, I remember Lynn Corsetson.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Tell us that. By far, most of the people who collect sales tax in the county pay it on thirty days after, after the, they pay it once a month, thirty, within thirty days after close of that month. Now, there are some, if they get over a certain threshold, they have to pay it like a twenty days. And there are some that are like, if you're one of the big shopping center, I mean, St. Macy's, they've only got two or three days to pay it, to pay it in. So I think it would be, say the coun, the council decide that, I just won't put in my two cents here. It'd be nice to make it coincide with the sales tax sale when they're finishing their books out. So, so they all have thirty days to fix it. They can do the sales tax, they can do their innkeeper's tax, they can do all at the same time.
Okay, okay. Yeah, we'll keep that in mind. And if I have your blessing, I'll be happy to work with Ted and the council. And we're continuing to either modify the old ordinance or whatever makes the most sense, so. Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next slide is what, what covered Bridge did.